Hello, I'm Dr. Deborah Davis and I must apologize because I was, I came here from Washington DC and I was not advised that there was 10 minutes available.
Okay, well, sorry.
So I will move ahead and introduce myself briefly. I was the Director of the Board on Environmental Studies and Toxicology at the National Academy of Sciences for 10 years and I have over 190 scientific publications and 11 monographs. I'm here as the President and Founder of Environmental Health Trust. I'm going to talk with you about what we know about radiation from cellphones and I'd like to say first of all that I completely agree with the CTIA, that we do not have consistent evidence on brain cancer. I also agree that cellphone radiation is weak, but what's missing from the realization that cellphone radiation has an effect that has nothing to do with its power. It has to do with the pulse nature of the signal and you can see here in this illustration from my colleague from the University of Athens, that the impact of radiation will vary greatly depending on the power. With respect to the brain cancer data, I want to say I'm not going to focus on brain cancer today because it has a long latency, but in fact, it's cherry picking to talk about those countries where there isn't an increase. On our website, we have recently reported the increase in brain cancer in Finland, Norway, and Australia. Those countries happen to have in common that they were early users of cellphones and authorities in those nations now are concerned that the increase that they're seeing in brain cancer in those nations is a reflection of what's happening because of cellphone use. Now with respect to microwave radiation, we know that it has positive effects because cellphone-like radiation today is being used to treat liver cancer. If it can treat liver cancer, it's telling you it has a biological effect. It's being used to stop bleeding, to enhance the uptake of drugs, and to detect cancer. So if it has these positive effects, how then can we deny that it might have negative effects? We know it's biologically active. Among the negative effects that have been demonstrated in the peer-reviewed literature that the World Health Organization looked at are these: the ability to damage DNA, to weaken the blood-brain barrier, and to damage sperm. And I want to talk with you now about scientific evidence, again, having nothing to do with cancer, having to do with sperm. These are experimental data developed when taking samples of sperm from human males and exposing them in a test tube to cellphone radiation. The exposed sperm, you see the slide at the top here, the exposed sperm died three times faster than the controlled sperm. This is human sperm. The bottom shows you measures of damage to DNA, and that damage was three times greater in human sperm. So this is not about brains, this is about sperm, although sometimes some people confuse the two of them. Now, what we do know is that cellphone users in a study done at the Cleveland Clinic, the Cleveland Clinic, have found in a controlled observational study that men who reported using cellphones four hours a day and keeping them in their pocket had about half the sperm count of others. And similar results have been reported in Turkey as well as in Australia at the National Center for Biotechnology. Middle school children reported in a report that we're releasing today to the Berkeley City Council in a peer-reviewed study are keeping cellphones in their pocket, some of them for 10 hours a day, 10 hours a day, and the kids are so good at this that they can text while a teacher's looking at them, not looking at the phone. Now why is this a problem? It might make them great at being neurosurgeons or pilots because of the fast eye-hand coordination, but what it does for their long-term exposure to their gonads is something of great concern, which is why this peer-reviewed article by Mary Redmain, which we released today to the City Council, argues that it's important to take precautionary policies with our children. Our children and their parents have a right to know about this damaging effect on human sperm. Now with respect to brain cancer, I would like to just say while that is not the major concern of this issue at this time, although the CTIA just spent most of its time discussing it, the fact is there's no increase in brain tumors found in the survivors of the atom bombs that dropped at the end of the war until 40 years later. Forty years later. Forty years ago, almost no one had a cellphone except for a few people in the military, even 10 years ago, but the use of cellphones has grown greatly, and that's why the World Health Organization issued its report. They concluded that where studies have followed people for 10 years or more, there is a doubled risk of brain tumors in well-conducted studies. The Israeli government has issued a warning about parotid gland tumors, a malignant tumor of the cheek. One in five of them is occurring in someone under the age of 20, and that's why they've issued a warning. These are data taken from the Journal of American Medical Association on brain metabolism, showing a significant increase in glucose metabolism seen on the side that's marked R there after just 50 minutes, that's five zero minutes. I want you to realize that cellphone standards today were set in 1993 to avoid heating. It's not about heat. The data today are out of touch with the current issues that we know in the science. And I'm going to now turn remarks over to my colleague, Professor Stan Glantz, who I'm honored to be with today. Many of you may know Professor Glantz, who is a distinguished researcher in the area of tobacco and is here with me today.
So, thank you. I'm Stan Glantz. I'm a professor of medicine at UCSF. As Deborah said, my forte is tobacco, but I've kind of been pulled into the cellphone discussion through, because I think it's interesting. The first thing, I know the people at IARC, I have worked, and I have over 300 or 350 publications and several books, since everyone's counting that. I know the people at IARC, I've worked with the people at IARC, I know Jan Sammett, who chaired the committee that listed cellphone radiation as a possible human carcinogen. IARC is impossible to convince of anything. It wasn't until about 1972 that they agreed smoking caused lung cancer. And if IARC is giving it a category 2B, that says there's something to be concerned about. Now, they didn't say it caused brain cancer, they said it was a possible cause. But I think the question people need to ask themselves is do you want to be doing the natural experiment for 40 years, exposing people to uncontrolled cellphone radiation if it's possibly giving them brain cancer? I want to, so I think that the earlier speaker really minimized how hard it is to even get a category 2B out of IARC. The second thing is I find the sperm data very compelling to the point that I'm actually using several of the studies that Deborah talked about and several others as examples in a statistics textbook that's about to be published. And I think, as the earlier speaker said, what you have to do is look at the epidemiology, look at the experimental data, look at the animal data, and when you look at the sperm results, they're quite compelling. What I tell my students is a cellphone isn't good enough to be a contraceptive. But if you, and I told this to my son, if you want to have kids, don't keep it on in your pocket and minimize the use. I have to say, I've been shocked at the behavior of the cellphone industry, and in many ways, they're behaving like the tobacco companies. They're attacking the science, they're not taking reason, don't, it's counting on the time, they're not taking reasonable steps that could be taken to reduce risks like directional antennas, like putting shielding on the phones if you have it on your belt so it doesn't broadcast into your body. And they're fighting, like the lawsuit they brought against San Francisco is almost identical to the lawsuit that the tobacco industry brought against the Food and Drug Administration against putting labels on cigarette packages warning people of the dangers. So I think that prudent, I'm not saying cellphone should be banned, I have one, which I have a piece on to keep it away from my head, and I leave it turned off when I don't need it. And I think that there are lots of things you can do with a cellphone to use it so that you get the benefits without the risks. And I think, you know, if you go back in the tobacco issue, Berkeley was the first city in California to pass a local smoking law in the late 70s, and look, some of you may have been involved in that, I think. And, you know, look where we've come. And I think that the local action by San Francisco, Berkeley if you choose to do it, and other places to start elevating this issue and getting people to take it seriously is a really, really, really important thing to do. I think there's enough science out there to be worried. Do we know everything? No. I look at the literature on cellphones and I think it's about where tobacco was in the 50s. You know, there was enough to know that there might be a problem, there were some areas where, I'll be very surprised if the sperm research is reversed. Nobody's looked at the effect on eggs because it's so hard, but I'm sure there are similar things there. And I think it's something that we need to deal with, and I'm very disappointed in the cellphone industry for not behaving responsibly and instead of fighting these things, working to get solutions. Thank you.
Fifteen seconds, I want to point out to you here, this graph that has been developed, and you will see on the bottom, there is no change in for brain cancer in the United States, but on the top, you will see something called the Central Brain Tumor Registry of the United States, which shows an increase in brain cancer. And part of this is a coding issue. If we have time, if you're interested, I can explain more about it.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about, you're coming out of the mission, impressions, you have more time. Sorry about that. Okay, so I think we'll actually hear now, how many people in the public wish to address this issue? Can we get a show of hands? Is that all right? Now, some people are lying to me, they're going to come forward. Okay, so there are obviously about 10, so I'm just going to, I'm going to give you each two minutes, if that's okay? So please come forward, and you can yield your time if you want to give more time, you can give your time to another person, they can have four minutes, okay? Please line up, there's no particular order. Here first, go ahead. You speak right there from the podium.
Hello, I'm a local filmmaker from San Francisco. I've been following this issue since January, and I've interviewed a lot of different people, including Steve Wozniak, the co-founder of Apple. Steve Wozniak told me prior to Steve Jobs dying by about a couple months, that in many cases that he's seen, that there are chances that cellphones can cause cancer. In the data, it is there. This is a guy who started America's biggest cellphone company, it's the biggest company in America, bigger than ExxonMobil. These people have money to be able to lobby, and they are doing it as hard as they can. And if you guys were to pass legislation in Berkeley, I think it would be incredibly powerful and I would be incredibly grateful for this. I've interviewed a lot of doctors, many of whom are in this room, but many as well on the East Coast, like Dr. Katz from Yale University, who said that with tobacco, you didn't see an increase in cancer for 30 years after the fact that people were smoking quite a bit. So this whole thing of latency, I think, is very, very poorly represented by the doctors on the cellphone industry's side, and I think that you guys should definitely think more about this issue and consider passing legislation. And I'm going to give up the rest of my time for the rest of these people to speak.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Hi, I'm Kate Bernier. I do not have a cellphone. I do not want to put others at risk who I feel they would be at risk, notably animals, children, not in that order, even trees and even our magnetosphere, which protects us from the sun. Thank you.
My name is Joel Moskowitz. I'm the Director of the Center for Environmental Health and the School of Public Health at UC Berkeley. I sent you an email on Sunday night, and I see it's in the supplemental package. I also have, I printed out one of the links, I submitted materials to the Community Environmental Advisory Commission. This is the Q and A I did for the Huffington Post, David Katz, in the spring. Three years ago, I was a total skeptic about this issue. I didn't believe cellphone radiation could possibly cause tumor risk or do sperm damage. I hadn't reviewed the research at that time. We had a visiting scholar from the National Cancer Center in South Korea. He did, in conjunction with our research group and some other researchers, a review of the literature, we did, which was published in the Journal of Clinical Oncology in the fall of 2009, about two years ago. I won't go into the gory details. Yeah, if you look at the overall body of the literature, you basically see no association. But if you partition the studies based on the quality of the research or the funding source, which are highly confounded, you see distinctly different patterns. There is clear evidence of increased tumor risk, brain tumor risk, parotid gland tumor risk, particularly for people who have used cellphones for 10 or more years, especially on the side of the head in which they use the cellphone. Regarding sperm damage, an issue that's come to my attention since that paper, and I've done dozens of interviews with the media from around the world, interestingly, much of the coverage that I've received has been outside of the United States. But there has been a recent review paper that looked at the sperm damage male infertility issue. Got no media coverage anywhere in the world, so I put out a news release to about 50 reporters that had interviewed me. Finally got two to pick it up, but one of those stories went global and received over 100 news websites, mostly in Asia.
Your time is up, sorry.
But just be available for questions.
Yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me at any time.
Thank you.
I'm welcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ellen Marks. This is my husband, Ellen Marks. I have been involved in this for about three years. Ellen had a grand mal seizure in 2008, a week before Senator Kennedy, who our son, who is here tonight, worked for. And we then found out that the Kennedy family was concerned that his cellphone use was the cause of his glioma, more probable than not. Experts around the world have said that my husband's glioma, which is the same tumor that the World Health Organization and International Agency for Research on Cancer classified as a possible human, they've classified cellphone use as a possible human carcinogen based on an increased risk of glioma associated with wireless cellphone use. I agree with Dr. Stanton Glantz, a conservative agency. I want to know, I've traveled around the nation, testifying against the cellphone industry. I want to know why, if everything they are telling us, this is the Apple iPhone literature. In the back of the book, you can forget about all the science. The science is there, though I firmly believe it. But stop debating the science and why is the FCC requiring that this language be in every manual? It tells you the iPhone is to be kept 5 eighths of an inch from your body. The BlackBerry, and they talked about sperm tonight, the BlackBerry says to keep it 0.98 inches from the abdomen, from your body, especially the lower abdomen of a teenager and the abdomen of a pregnant woman. Why, Mr. Ashalt and Dr. Ori, is that information in these books? That is the bottom line. And then, when the cities and states, great cities like you, want to put it at the point of sale, they come in and sue and say that it's a violation of their First Amendment rights, there's something very wrong with what's going on here. And I thank you, the City of Berkeley, for putting on this forum and allowing us to speak about it. On behalf of my family, this has been torture. And many other victims have reached out to me. I've testified to Congress on this, I've been on national TV. There are thousands of people dying from this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I just want to say that had I read the manual, I wouldn't have done what I did with my cellphone, been more preventative, I would have used it in a more sensible way. I didn't read the manual, I knew how to use the phone, and so I didn't read the manual, and it's buried in there, and I think that it should be more, people should be more aware of what's in that manual. If they're, if they're putting it in there, then there is an issue. And I'd like to give the rest of my time to my wife again. So I know you can speak for hours.
Thank you. Well, I could, but I won't, I won't. I think that the point is that like Senator Semidion said in the California State Environmental Quality Commission hearing, when Senator Mark Leno tried to get very minimal language passed in May, and he pulled it until next year. Senator Semidion said to Daine Snowden, the then CTIA VP, "There is an issue." He said, "If this information is showing up in the back of these books, there is an issue and you cannot deny it." He said, "Why is that information there, Mr. Snowden?" And he very sheepishly answered, "Because the FCC requires us to put it there." And there was great laughter in the crowd because the industry is telling everyone that the FCC says they're safe. What they're not telling you is the FCC says they're safe if you hold them up to an inch away from your body, the way they are tested. And thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tony Hill. I'm retired and I live in Berkeley. I've listened to these arguments, if you could call them that. I tend to try to listen to the scientific data, and I haven't heard any. I've seen graphs on the screen by both sides. I've heard that there are studies worldwide on both sides, and they have doctors on both sides who claim one way and then the other. So what are we listening to tonight? Can you make a decision by hearing anecdotal stories of tragedy? I don't think so. There's too many anecdotal stories of no tragedy. So why don't we have a debate in which people can criticize the other's studies and show where the flaws are? Are there flaws in both studies, either side? Let's find out. Let's get both sides to get up here and criticize each other's studies and show where the flaws are, and not just listen to, "I had a cousin who died of whatever." I carry a cellphone, yeah, and I, and so far, I haven't been convinced to not carry it. But, okay, so I think that we need a meeting, or several meetings, in the public to show how the other side has massaged the data to make it look like their side is right. I admit that the, obviously, the cellphone people have their reasons for doing it, the other people have their reasons for doing it. Let's get them out in a forum and have a debate and settle which data is which data. I mean, there's countries all over the world saying that their data is correct.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Sure. Sir, you said you hadn't been convinced to stop using your cellphone, carrying it with you.
Right.
Is it possible for you to be convinced to use it more safely?
Many things are possible. I could throw it away, that's a possibility too.
No, that's a direct question. Could you be convinced, through data, through the process, through outline?
Sure. If you showed me the data and you showed me a lineup, enough people who are familiar with this, that I should not use it the way I'm using it, I'd be happy to use it the way they suggested.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, please. I think we'll try to hold most questions till we get to the end. If we can, let that one go, but we, okay?
Hello, and thank you for having us here today. I want to read you a quote. Let me be very clear, the industry has not said once that cellphones are safe. And let me tell you who said that. The CTIA, the industry themselves, said the cellphones are not proven safe. The burden should be on the CTIA to prove that they are safe, not the burden on us to prove that they're dangerous. Gavin Newsom said, "The CTIA, they buy the science, they buy apathy, and they buy politicians." The info is already listed in the back of the user manuals, hidden. It needs to be put onto the box on posters, visible at the point of sale. I want to read a couple facts to you real quick. Cellphone radiation has been shown to damage and break living DNA. Research has shown that talking on a cellphone for as little as only two minutes will disable the blood-brain barrier. Talking on a cellphone for only 500 minutes a month can increase the probability of brain cancer by 140 to 300 percent. Cellphones worn on a belt clip can reduce sperm by already 30 percent, we discussed that earlier. Over 31 million new young users will join the market between 2005 and 2010. An environmental advocacy group for young people in Spain argues, "The mobile telephone industry is acting like the tobacco industry by designing products that addict the very young." A two-minute cellphone call can alter a child's brain function for over an hour. In 1993, the telecom industry committed $25 million for a series of research projects designed to prove that cellphones are safe. I realize that we keep going back and forth in the science here, but you need to employ the precautionary principle. Play it safe, it's better to be safe than sorry.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Nordahl. I actually drove up here from Santa Cruz. But, yeah, as far as, I very much endorse the concept of educating people. At a bare minimum, what's already printed in the manual by the manufacturer, that would be nice to have that displayed at the time of sale. And what disturbs me is I have a three-year-old daughter, and so I go to a lot of baby group functions and such. And I have seen infants where mothers give their baby their cellphone to play with, as a chew toy. There's actually iPhone applications that have little songs and lullabies with graphics of little cartoon characters dancing around, where they put the iPhone right next to their baby's head to help lull their baby to sleep. Now that I've read a lot of this research, that's very disturbing to me. And if I bring this up with some of my friends' parents, you can understand it's an awkward situation. I don't want to be the, be the one who's bringing up that news for people. And to tell you the truth, nine out of 10 of my friends are completely unaware that there's any risk associated with a cellphone whatsoever. So that's what I'd like to say and let you guys know, that there's a lot of babies out there using cellphones as chew toys. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lloyd Morgan, long-term Berkeley resident. You heard at the beginning of Dr. Ori's discussion of why it was impossible because cellphones, so many people are using them, there's no increase in brain tumors. Well, there's another way to look at it. If cellphones are causing brain tumors, what would you expect? Well, first of all, cellphones only radiate a portion of your body, so whatever side you have it on will be, will you have the risk. This has been shown for brain cancer. This has been shown for acoustic neuroma. This has been shown for meningioma. This has been shown for the parotid gland in our cheek. This has been shown for our testes, where if you keep it in the left pocket, it's your left testicle, if you choose to have your right testicle get the cancer, you put it in your right pocket. In addition, the studies have shown that the greater your cumulative hours of use, the higher your risk. The greater the length of time since your first use, the higher the risk. The greater the power radiated by the cellphone, the higher the risk. And the younger you are when you first start using a cellphone, the higher the risk. Now, if causing cancer, that's what you would expect, and that's the data. Latency time is the great smog that the industry puts out. They know full well, there's a 30- to 40-year latency time. So when they show you an incidence graph that doesn't increase, what percent of the popul, that's the whole population, that's 100 percent of the population, what percent of the population was using cellphones 30 or 40 years ago? The answer in the United States is zero. Yet, we find greater than 10 years of use, a doubling of risk consistently, including industry-funded studies. Double the risk. Well, what we're looking at, if you think about a classic bell curve, that the peak is at 30 years, way on the left side is the 10 years, and that's where the risk really is already occurring. It's going to get much worse. The final thing is, the negative studies are industry-funded. So, as I was just saying, the industry literally consistently publishes studies, they got more money than anybody. The United States does almost zero research. And it's the classic thing, we've all heard of financial bias, and guess where the money comes from? But the fascinating thing is even the industry-funded studies are finding doubled risk at greater years. This is a major problem, and we're going to have a tsunami of brain tumors in about 10 to 15 years, and all the other cancers. The parotid gland study in China has shown a 20- and 30-fold risk. That's tobacco risk. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for holding this hearing tonight. My name is Sarah Sunstein, I work in Berkeley, and I'm not going to talk about science, I'm going to talk about my experience, which is, if I am near a cellphone that's operating, within a minute or so, my head starts getting like this. If I'm driving a car and my friend is next to me using the cellphone on her left ear, my head starts going like this. I can get really out of it, being around cellphones, as well as Wi-Fi and smart meters, but that's another story. I'm not the only one with this experience. I know a lot of people who are also very sensitive to them. And my thinking is that just because other people aren't aware of the effects on their body, doesn't mean there aren't being effects. I consider myself one of those canaries in the col... I consider myself one of those canaries in the coalmine. And if it's doing it to me, it's doing it to other people, perhaps at a degree, or some other something. But cellphones have a radiation, they do something. I would love to see this ordinance passed. I'd also like to see added to it, the power of each cellphone labeled very clearly. I have a very old cordless phone that works great. I can use it. I had to get a new cordless phone because it's impossible to find answering machines when they die without getting a whole phone thing. This newer cordless phone is like 6 Hz or megahertz or whatever, but it's 6 instead of .9. I cannot hold it up to my head. So, that's it. And I know I'm not the only person in Berkeley like this. I think people need to be warned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last gentleman who joined there, a person joined the line. Is anybody after that person is going to speak for one minute? Because we're totally deceptive. Yes, please. Two minutes, a rest, and then after, the next people joining the line are going to get a minute after the person.
Hello. My name is Leslie DeTayen-Jay. I'm a San Francisco resident, and I have a 12-year-old son. And I want the right to know. The reason is that I refuse to give my son a cellphone. However, in his class of about 59 kids, every single child has a cellphone. The parents need to know information about cellphones. The science is maybe not final, but there's enough evidence that the link between tumors, brain tumors, and cellphone is there. Parents especially need to know this. They need to know this information. If you are concerned about potential health effects from cellphone RF energy, the city of San Francisco recommends. This was part of the right to know, which the CTIA is battling us against.
Right to know?
We, as a parent, I can tell you, majority of parents do not know this information. They're too busy working, they're too busy with taking care of the kids, to research this information. Please, if you would take note of that. It's very important information. Would you like me to leave this with you?
We have a copy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Jenny Shore. I'm a resident of Richmond. I'm not working now, but I had a 20-year career in marketing, including technology marketing. I concur with so much of what was said, and I won't repeat it. I do think that parents need a right, have a right to know. Everybody has a right to know. I read Deborah's book from cover to cover, and I try to express to my friends, and I'm-- people respond to me like I'm taking away their sexy toy. And I think that we need to move beyond and start designing products that are safer. And we need to be afraid to hold our phone next to our skin. And we aren't afraid, we don't know to be afraid. We can't feel it. And I think that even the phone should say, "Don't touch, don't let the phone touch your skin." And it's hard to be aware and try to share that with other people to keep my friends' babies safe. And it would be helpful if the city passed a law so that, so that when those of us that understand try to express it, people can maybe listen. And I really think that the industry needs to move into developing products that take advantage of what we know, so they're safe. And it's a huge, huge industry with a lot of profit at stake, and that's really where the, this issue is, I think. Thank you.
My name is Toni Stein. I live in Berkeley. I'm speaking as a citizen. I work a day job for the state. I'm an environmental engineer with a PhD, and I also do community service. I'm here to speak, I have a nine-year-old and a 12-year-old. I'm a mother. And I'm very concerned about my children, as well as all children, all adults, people with disabilities, and workers as well. And I think we, as citizens and people on the city council, have an obligation to express and provide information. This is about explaining safety and trying to use devices that we all use and acknowledge, and to use them safely, and to learn how to do that. And in order to do that, we have an obligation to provide information to each other, and to be community neighbors, to help each other learn the information that isn't so well-understood. And it's simple to understand the safety features, and that's what this is all about. We can fight about the science, and that is important, but right now, we just need to help each other as community people, to help each other to learn how to use them as safely as we know how, and to spread the word. And that's what I hope is important. The obligation to those that work for the city of Berkeley, we have to also keep their safety and to teach them, if that's part of their job, how to use them safely. Because we, in the end, pay for the, what ends up as workers' compensation claims if they are to get sick. This ends up on the shoulders of our city as well. I want to help my children to use them safely.
Thank you. Okay, this is our last two-minute person, and then you guys can, if you can get somebody to, you can have another minute, too.
I don't think I'm going to take two minutes, but--
Okay.
Hi, my name is Claudia Castro. I'm a long-term Berkeley resident, and this is my first city council meeting. It was felt important enough for me to come. I have friends who, we have talks about our cellphones, and I have friends who've given up their cellphones because, and I experienced it too, you can feel like, I feel like an aching in my hand. And I'm, and this is like the only kind of thing I've ever, other things don't bother me, but I do experience that. And I just wanted to say, here's an experiment that you can try. Go buy one of those $20 Go phones. There are ones that low-income people use, and right now, I'm using one. And I hate talking on it, because it seems that the lower the price tag, or for a $20 cellphone, you get a lot more radiation. So, try it. And a lot of us are trying to just like survive these days, and I need to buy a new cellphone, and I don't have the time to do all the research, and so, you could help your citizens a lot by giving us recommendations and, because not all of us have time to do that kind of research. Thanks.
Michael.
My name is Michael Barglow. While the meeting was going on, I turned my cellphone off, because I got a little piece of information that made complete sense to me. You know, I'm sitting in this meeting for an hour, turn my cellphone off. And it's that kind of information, I think, that makes sense. I'm speaking to those of you who may be leaning in the direction of voting against this resolution, so I'd like you to listen. I would like to hear your reasons for wanting to keep from the public the amount of radiation these phones produce. Why keep this information under wraps? Why are you against those people who are leaning against this resolution? Why are you against providing people with this information so they could decide whether the amount of radiation is an issue for them, and then go out and buy a cellphone that has less radiation? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Conley. Came over from Nevada, California. I work for a little startup company over in Nevada. My employer was inspired to, one of the projects we're working on right now is a little Android app, because look what my phone does.
Too close.
If the phone, and we're, it's a little app that helps people, reminds people to keep the phone a safe distance from their head.
I don't think people could hear that. What did it say?
Do it again.
Too clo, too clo, too, too close.
It says, "Too close."
To your body.
Okay, okay. We got it.
Right now, I've got it set to only to any time, but there's a preference in there to set it so it goes off during phone calls only. Anyway, I'm not here to sell, you know, our $1.99 app, but our founder of our company was inspired by four of his personal friends passed away due to glioma. And we went to the CITA--
We're going to give you another 15 seconds.
Thank you very much. We went to the CTIA cellphone trade show a couple of weeks ago, and we kind of expected to go into a hostile environment, where in fact, we were greeted very warmly by a lot of the engineers that designed the phones, and they all kind of said, "Gee, it's about time somebody addressed this issue."
Thank you.
We had a 19-by-25 graphic that had all of the--
Great. Good luck. Good luck. Thank you.
Good luck to all of them.
Thank you for listening. My name's Rosemary Binsko. I live in Berkeley.
Can you move closer to the mic, please?
Yeah. And I've never had a cellphone, because I've always been convinced by the research that I've seen, including that new research that if you're in a enclosed metal surroundings, like a muni, streetcar, then the effects were stronger and farther out. And I feel put upon by people who are using their cellphones next to me, because I know it's affecting me. And so, that's one reason I feel like it should be on theirs. For the people who don't choose to use the cellphones, it's not our choice. We're still affected, even though if we're not using it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I am Stephanie Thomas from Berkeley. I was actually going to address something similar to that, that any time you're in a metal enclosure, like an elevator, a car, a train, that's the time the cellphone has to work harder to try to get the signal. And in a car or a train, you're moving between cell tower to cell tower, and at the, so this is the kind of information, if people could get this kind of information, perhaps if you have to use it in the car for a moment, turn it off. Also, since it bounces, there are devices that you can, I think, put on your phone to put on the top of your car, so the signal, you know, comes from there to your earphone and everything. So, there are lots of, lots of things, and, well, the other thing I was going to say, and I didn't bring the facts with me, but there was something in our smart meter group, and I don't read all the things anymore out of time, but something about a study somewhere we, that young people--
You know what?
I'll just say, young people, there are studies about their learning going down using the cellphones.
Thank you.
And I could send that to you later.
Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you. This is our last speaker.
Hi. My name is Lori Bam-Gorton. The occupy movement all over this country is making clear right now that the corporations have been controlling our lives, ripping us off, and controlling our governments, our national governments, local governments, whatever, okay? And personally, this freaks me out. I have a son, he's 26. He says to me the other day, "Mom, I want to have three kids." He's been using a cellphone and has it in his pocket. So, when the first, when the industry people and doctors get up, I feel, ah, phew, thank God, my blood pressure goes down. And then I hear what I believe to be the precautionary truth, which is that we don't know, it's dangerous, sperm is dying, and what worries me is what happens if the sperm isn't dead, but comes out damaged? I have friends who live with kids with severe disabilities, and it controls their lives. They don't have a life for themselves trying to deal with their sick children. So, I mean, how could we do anything else but be precautionary if we don't want to be controlled by corporate, corporate America?
So, that concludes the public input. So, there'll be questions now for the council, and then I want to remind people, we have another, another, you know, work session. I'd like to start off by asking our attorney, in your presentation, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get this. I'm concerned about our ability to act at this point, assuming we wanted to, to take steps. Is it possible that we could conceivably adopt something similar to what you presented to us? Or are we in limbo with the court, waiting to see what the court parameters the court's going to exercise?
Well, we have, the city has not been enjoined, so Berkeley can do what it wants. I think it would not be wise, under the circumstances, probably, to go beyond what Judge Alsup, you know, allowed in his injunction. But that's ultimately a policy choice for you.
Okay. And I want to just notify people in the audience, this is actually just an informational hearing, really. And we cannot, we're not noticed to take any action. We can't, we can't take action even if we wanted to. We'd have to addendize that and advertise that before we could take any action. So, this is really just for information this evening. Counselor Wozniak?
Yeah, I want to make some remarks on the issue. I, originally, I supported putting some information out on the general principle of right to know, but I was concerned, I think, by the advocacy group that they don't want to just do right to know, they want to have a right to frighten people in many ways. They overstate the facts. And I think we do need to keep this on the facts. And the facts really are that if cellphone radiation, or RF radiation, you know, in this region, which is, also includes TV and radio, which have been around for 100 years, almost, cause cancer, it's going to be a very weak effect. Because even ionizing radiation, you know, the people in Hiroshima and Nagasaki who survived the bomb blast and got cancer later on, it was only 10 percent above the background cancer rate. It was a weak effect, and those people got a very high dose. So, we're talking about electromagnetic radiation down in the radio frequency range or the cellphone range, that's millions to billions of times lower energy. And it's the energy of the photons that makes a difference, whether you can actually break a chemical bond or not, whether you can actually break DNA. Any cellphone study using cellphone radiation that shows breaks strands of DNA, you should be very, very skeptical, because it, you know, the energies of those photons are millions of times too low in energy for that to happen. It's much more likely that it's experimental. I'm saying, you know, we should check, we should be very careful about that kind of data. There's also been raised an analogy between smoking and cellphones. And I want to say, it's very different. Smoking involves a lot of chemicals, and chemical, our bodies are, is a very exquisitely complicated chemical machine. Some very little differences, like oxygen interacting with hemoglobin, it's essential for us breathing. You change that molecule, adding a carbon and have CO, you know, carbon monoxide, and you can kill people. Chemicals, very low amounts can be very toxic, okay? Radiation, electromagnetic radiation, the toxicity depends on the energy, and you have to have high enough energy to break chemical bonds to cause cancer. At least, that's all of the physics that we know, okay? I would like to, I would also like to comment, people have said the latency period for cancer is 30 or 40 years. That's just not true. You go look at the Hiroshima studies, the attacks, they saw leukemia within the first 10 years, the same way in Chernobyl. Thyroid cancers were, they saw them after five to 10 years. The latency is not 30 or 40 years, okay? It's much, much shorter than that.
Please, please.
These are, these are facts. We're not arguing interpretation here. There's a lot of room for interpretation in any study, because you're looking for a very weak effect. So, let me, let me, let me make a few more comments, and then we can go to other council people. People--
The audience, I just wanted, the audience, come on. This is, we're having an information, and he's entitled to his opinion. Please, hold your comments.
People have said that somehow, the fact that you're not supposed to hold a cellphone right on your head, and if you move it a half an inch away, or they said five eighths of an inch, which is a little over a half an inch, somehow it reduces the danger. Well, what's, if there's, if it's dangerous that, you know, on the surface, it's still going to be dangerous at five eighths of an inch. There's no decrease.
The inverse square law--
The inverse square law is, has zero effect at that point, okay? It doesn't reduce the intensity by changing it a half an inch. You go sit down and do the calculation. I have you to walk you through it. The last comment that I want to make is that, you know, there are literally thousands of studies about cellphones, okay? And many of them show no effect, some of them show small effects, and it's, 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 the picture is not clear. And some people say we should invoke the precautionary principle, and there's a reasonable argument for that. But that's different than saying that, you know, we're facing Armageddon in 10 years. And, you know, it's a possible carcinogen. Other things that are listed as possible carcinogens are coffee and pickled vegetables. I mean, are we going to stop drinking coffee because it's a possible carcinogen? Do we put on all our, you know, coffee things that there's a warning there? You know, maybe. Depends how far you want to go with the precautionary principle. So, I think you have to have some balance here. I mean, there may be some risks. The science is not settled to say it is, I think is, you know, there's some piece of the science that's settled, but there are lots and lots of studies out there, some done with higher and better quality or better, you know, constructed studies. And you have to look at them all. You can't cherry pick and just take the ones that agrees with your point of view. That's not good science.
Thank you. Counsel-- Councilmember Anderson?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that this brief period of time that we allowed for this discussion is totally inadequate. I think when we're dealing with a subject of this kind of import, it's incumbent upon the city as the protectors of the health and safety of people in this community to take a more vigorous and more expansive look at this thing. I would recommend that the city co-sponsor, with anybody else that wants to be part of it, a whole-day symposium on this, where we can have the debate and the discussion about the science, which, according to some people, is open to various interpretations. What's not open to interpretation is our responsibility to provide information to people so that they can make informed decisions about consumer products that may be dangerous to them. When these issues first arose around the cellphone towers about four or five years ago, I went on the internet and researched the amount of money that the cellphone industry concentrated on Congress in the years after 1996 and the passage of the Telecommunications Act. $500 million went to Congress in the form of lobbyists' fees and other kinds of things that we commonly recognize now as being a form of bribery. The person that stepped to the microphone and noted the fact that we have upheaval all over this country because people are fed up with their lives, every of their lives, being controlled by those who have the most money and the most resources. And what we do have are people and people power, and we need to exercise that like the people are exercising across this country and across this globe, resisting the oppressive boot of finance and money and influence on the legislative process that spills over invariably into the scientific community. I can cite you a number of reports around the issues of asbestos, smoking, and other forms of radiation that a powerful industry with almost unlimited resources was able to field scientists, even doctors, coming on television with smoking commercials, saying that it was just fine. So we know what the influence and the power of money and vested interests can do to the welfare of the body politic of this country. We have a responsibility to employ those principles that were developed from our life experiences, having to do with how people have been bamboozled by bad products with lots of money behind them, and Congress people and others being bought off to look the other way. We're not looking the other way. Red herrings that get trotted out, bananas, vegetables, you know, come on. Are you talking to children here? You're not. I know you wish you were talking to children because they're more easily influenced to buy your products at an early age, but we have a responsibility here to be clear about what it means for this body, this city council, to take a stand in favor and in support of people being allowed to make informed decisions. And that's all this ordinance ever wanted to do, was make informed decisions. Put the, put the information out there, let people make their own decisions, let people be educated about the things that already appear in the manuals, in the smallest of print, where you're not encouraged to read it. We want to blow that print up, post it, and let people have a fair fighting chance in making decisions about the products they use. When these cellphones were first introduced, there was no mention of huge bandwidth to transfer data. It was merely a means of communications similar to the phone that you already had in your home, and that's how this stuff was sold to us. And as time went along, and the money got big, and the greed got even bigger, then we have 100 million cellphones in the country that haven't been adequately vetted to see if they are dangerous to people. We have a responsible, responsibility in government to advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves. The three-year-old is playing with a phone. The 10-year-old that takes his phone to school and then puts it under their pillow at work, at, at home, under their pillow. These are incredibly invasive things to our bodies that we have no real knowledge of, and we have just scratched the surface when it comes to informing the public. And we need to take this thing to its maximum, inform the public so that the public can know, and then other questions will come up. You know that. This is no different from the National Rifle Association opposing everything that limits the, the sale and use of guns, whether they're assault rifles or 30-clip magazines and pistols. They always come out, take a stand, and fight back on any effort to try to reduce the danger to the public because money is involved.
Can we, can you conclude? Okay. So I think we've had, so we have had two sides of the coin here, so now, I, what I want to question people, at 6:30, we're going to terminate this, and we're going to go to the other. So I'd ask, and I see there are three other members wish to speak. We're going to have more opportunities, this subject is not going away. I'm sure we're going to have it scheduled back for some other actions as we see what happens in San Francisco. So I would ask that you keep your remarks brief, and we end at 6:30, okay? Councilmember Capitelli?
Yeah. It's always hard to follow, Councilmember Anderson. But I, I think, first of all, I think all of us should be respectful of one another as we discuss this issue. I am not the sharpest tack in the box, and so understanding the, the information that was presented tonight, I'm, I'm getting sort of an overview, and obviously, people disagree as to statistics. I do agree with Councilmember Anderson. I think people should be able to make informed decisions, and if there is a risk involved, then I think people should know the risk, no matter how small it might be. I went home today, and I am, I own a cellphone, and I got my box out and went through the manuals, and nowhere could I find actually any warning at all. And then I noticed on the bottom of the box, in very small font, that it meets the FCC exposure guidelines, and for further information, go to fcc.gov slash oet slash EA. So I went there, and I spent 25 minutes trying to find any kind of warning or cautionary wording and couldn't find it. And I'm pretty good at going around the, the web. So I would say it's, it's difficult to make an informed decision. At my age, given the level of my sperm activity, that's probably not an issue for me, but I hope my wife's not watching tonight. But I do think, I go back to the idea of an informed decision, and I, I have a question for the city attorney, but I will say, by the way, I was listening on the radio the other day, and there was a report as to, the more well-done your steak is, the more carcinogens there are in the steak. I don't eat steak much, but that must be disappointing to a lot of people. I want to ask the city attorney, at this point, this is the one item that the judge, that the court has ruled San Francisco can go ahead with?
Yes.
Okay? This, this particular court, and I assume it's going up to the appellate level, and it could even go to the Supreme Court.
That's my assumption, and, and the attorney from CITIA is here, and he could answer that question as well.
You think he wants to publicly state that he's going to make an appeal of the, of the decision? He may not. In any case, I would certainly be willing to move forward with this type of disclosure. I, it seems a little foolish for us to go forward with additional, you know, the stickers, et cetera, because we're just going to wind up in court, and we'll be enjoined. I assume that would be the likely result?
Well, it's certainly a possibility.
Okay. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is this, this is going to be fought in the courts. I want to participate with an amicus brief or a friend of the court, or whatever that might be, in terms of moving San Francisco's case forward, but I would, I would suggest that we come back with an action which we know we will be able to move forward with, and allow our citizens to have some additional information as to the dangers involved.
Councilor Wozniak?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm, I can't merely manage the sort of dueling of the scientific studies, but I, I don't think there's any reason for us to really wait for making the first step, which is to go ahead with what's already, which is pretty much what you would, you would suggested, because I think it is a first step. We watched the, the whole tobacco debacle over decades, and we knew that more and more came out all the time, and there were fewer and fewer experts who were willing to sit up there and, and lie, frankly. So rather than, you know, take our time for this, I just wanted to let people know that I, I do support going ahead with this first step, which is to give, give information to people. I'm really very frightened about kids in particular, and I watch, you know, let's listen to this story, let me, you know, play this little thing for you, and so I, I think we just need to educate people, and this is a very good beginning. Thanks.
Councilmember Worthington?
Well, I think Councilmember Anderson has pretty much said most everything that needs to be said on the subject, and he, as, as a nurse, he has a lot of familiarity with health issues, and I've seen him spend a lot of time and energy researching this issue and getting a, a lot more facts probably than all the rest of us on the city council. So I think we should give him great kudos for his leadership on this issue, and we should move forward in supporting his proposals on how to move forward on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think, I think it's pretty obvious that the council believe, you know, the majority of the council will support putting this forward, so we'd, we'd like to adjournize this, and we'll ask the agenda committee to, to adjournize this before we, so we can do something similar, and using this as a model, the San Francisco radio frequency as a model, and then we can, at that time, we can determine whether we want to go further or what we want to do. Councilmember Worthing?
I think out of respect for Councilmember Anderson, who's spent countless hours working on this, perhaps we could let him adjournize it, since he's got the most knowledge, I think, of any of us.
I'd be glad to if you promised not to give a speech over five minutes. Okay. Okay. Well, I think that concludes it.
I think we're more interested in quality than quantity. Councilmember Anderson does that often, and when he does, he speaks with great research and great authority, so.
God, this is a paid political announcement here, I don't know.
No, this is simply saying, you know, if someone has something to say for five minutes, we should listen. Sometimes people talk for one minute and say a lot, and sometimes they take longer.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not disputing his comments, but, but anyway, so we're going to, we're going to, that concludes this portion. We're going to now go to our next item on the work session, which, thank you for coming, and we appreciate all, everybody coming long distances to be here. Thank you.
Of course.
And I learned, so we're going to go right into, are you going to wait until after? After, after, we're going to, we're going to have another one, then we're. Okay, let's go right away. Come on, gang, let's step on it. Please take your conversations outside. We don't have much time for this next presentation. A lot of garbage. Okay, Andrew, go ahead. Start in, yeah, we can just talk. Please be quiet, we're going to continue our business. Thank you.
Let me go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and, and members of the council.